Here I am, testing my audio. I don't know if anyone's checked in yet. That's pretty loud in my voice. So, let's get started. Alright, so today I have two main priorities. I have this zombie game we are working on for my AI class. Strangely enough, we're supposed to implement something that is... Just to implement any feature in the game. Not necessarily AI-focused. So, I chose... I seem to be leaning towards enjoying doing UI, user interface, whenever I'm doing projects. So, I'm going to do some UI for this game. One other guy's doing the HUD, so I'm gonna be doing a minimap. And I'm just gonna walk you through what I've got so far. Yeah, show you what I got so far. So, this is the game. It's a... You're the blue player. You move around and you can shoot things. Purple is players and green are zombies. And they go towards the closest player. You want to kill the zombies. And you win this game by killing all the zombies in the level before all the humans get infected or you get caught by the zombies yourself. So you don't want to kill the pink ones. I know I murdered an innocent human over there. But you're looking around to try to fight the zombies. So, down here is my start of my minimap. So I didn't want it to overlay too hard, so I've got it on transparency. My character's in the middle. And basically what I want to do is have it ping out... Ping out from the center and find moving things. I want to color code them based on what it is, so I want to... Have if it's... I want to make it kind of infrared as well. So we're gonna make the zombies... Gonna make them do... No, don't get him. Too late. We're gonna make the zombies do a cooler color, so it's like a light blue. And then the red-blooded humans are gonna be a redder color, just like an infrared sensor. So it's gonna be kind of a combination motion-infrared sensor for your minimap. So it's only gonna do ones that are... So it's only gonna do things that are moving. Or not only do them, but if they're moving, they're gonna be brighter. And if they are... or less opaque. Or more opaque, sorry. And if they are... zombies are gonna be blue and if they're humans, they're gonna be pink. So that's what we're aiming for, all our minimap down here. Okay, so here's what I've got so far for code. This game uses a popular YouTube guy. He's doing something called Bungen. His name's Ben and he does a game engine. I should probably link that to you guys. At some point, but as soon as I have some viewers, I will potentially do that. Yep, nobody's watching me. So as soon as somebody asks, I'll show you how to find Bungen. But I will link it on my YouTube channel when I post this up there. So what we're doing, we have a minimap class. And basically I've followed his style for the agent. So he has an update method, a draw method, and then any helper methods he might need: collide with level, collide with agent, apply damage, etc. So our minimap, we're gonna update it. And it needs to know... I'm actually gonna take this out because I'm not drawing the level since it's just a motion sensor, heat sensor. So it needs to know... Every time it updates, it needs to know about the humans, the zombies, and it needs to be able to draw them. I think this might come out as well. Because I've gotta figure out a way to work around when I draw them. So every time I update, I need to know where the humans and the zombies are. I'll also start with a reference to the player, so I always know where he is. Since he was already a pointer, this was easy. But these vectors are already stored in the level or the main game class. So I don't want to copy those vectors twice when I can just pass them in. But since the player is just a pointer, not a biggie. So we're gonna use the player's position to draw these things relative to where the player is because the camera follows the player. Then when we draw Bungen, we're gonna draw using Bungen's sprite batch. And then we have to... I'm making two helper methods to draw each little human and each little zombie on the minimap. So... What I need to do is store the last position of the humans and the zombies. And this is going to drive the intensity of the color. So if they have moved a lot, then they're going to be a more solid color, so my alpha's gonna be higher. And if they're human, they're gonna be pink or red, sorry. And for the zombies, the same thing. So if they're gonna move, how far they've been moving since the last frame is gonna drive this this intensity for the alpha. So I need to know their previous positions to calculate that. So this is their position from the last frame. And basically I'm gonna take the distance between this position and this position and store that in something else. This is a future helper method, so it's my translate to minimap position. So it's gonna take the world position of the human and then draw it on the minimap if it's close enough to the player. If it's within that white radius that I had. And then I wanted to pulse, like I was saying, it would look cooler if they had like a little pulse going, so it looked like those motion detectors that you see in like Aliens the movie. So we're going through and we are updating here. So our time since last update is just gonna start at zero. And then this is how often we're gonna pulse, so every second-ish. I don't think this is the time. At this point, this Bungen isn't based on time. So it's just how fast your computer can run it. And I'll eventually include these. Okay, so what I have so far for my minimap is... I'm gonna take out this because I don't use it. And the sprite batch, because I'm not using it anymore. So when I initially have my minimap, my player equals the player reference that I pass in from the main game, where it stores a player reference as well. So main game has a player reference here. So I'm just setting that player reference to that player. And here's my minimap, by the way. So... I just set that up. Any other default things I would set up in here, but that's the only one I'm actually setting right beginning, is this player position. These I calculate every frame. These I'm using internally. And I've already initialized it. So... Yeah. So, this one, I have to delete player because it's a pointer and I don't want to leave any dangling pointers. So it's my constructor and destructor. Then my update function, I've started pseudocoding everything and that really helps me work. So in my update, I kinda take all the draws into the draw method. So basically, I'm gonna assume that I'm at a 30s... Whatever frame rate that is, I think that's 60 frames per second. So I'm assuming that's 60 frames per second and each time I go through this update, I'm gonna add the time for a sixtieth of a second. Once I get higher than the pulse, then I'm going to set it to zero. And I'm gonna boost my alpha for... boost my base alpha. So the alpha's gonna be driven by two things: when the pulse went out and how much they've moved. So my base alpha is when... how much is given to the alpha by the pulse of the guy. So after I go through this and I set my alphas, then I'm gonna loop through the humans. I'm gonna calculate how much they moved last frame. I'm gonna map that distance to a new alpha. If the human is on the minimap, so I'm gonna be checking the distance here. Check distance to the player. And this will take some playtesting to figure out exactly how far away a player has to be to fit on that circle that I drew. But if the human is on the minimap, then I'm gonna draw the human. So I like to keep... This is kind of drawing logic now. So we're going to put this into our drawHuman method, which we have not yet implemented. And we're gonna do the same. The zombies is basically the same. So what we have though, we have to know... We have to loop through all these humans that I just got and set a new alpha up. Okay. So when we're doing that, we have to start them somewhere because it ends up being used by the draw method over here. So I need to set up a member variable. So it's going to be an std vector. So I don't know how many I'm gonna have. And this is going to be for the humans. And so it's gonna be float. And it's going to be human alphas. And I forgot my colon. And... It's defined right here. What did I miss? Okay, that was weird. Maybe I had a typo. Okay. So I need the human alphas. So this is how much... How heavy is it to draw the human icon? How heavy to draw this zombie icon? Okay, so each time I go through, I'm going to set up... Each time I go through these vectors, I need to draw them using these alphas. So I calculate that in my update step. Then, so here, I need to implement these functions here. So, I'm gonna draw a single human and a single zombie in these. Okay, so you'll notice here is my draw method, which I didn't really talk about. So my draw method so far, I'm just drawing the gray circle. So I set up a color. It's gray. I'm using hiscircle.ping from his textures. So it's the same circle as the human and the zombies, but I'm just making it gray and I'm changing the alpha to 200 instead of 255. I'm setting up a rect to put it in. This is just how the texture gets mapped to this rect. So it's going to be on the whole rectangle from the bottom left to the top right. And where is that rectangle? Well, it's at the player's position. And I had to play with these numbers and I'll set these up to be different eventually. So this is the player's position, minus 440, minus 380. So that's just taking it from the center of the screen where the player is and moving it down and to the left and then draw a circle there. Okay, and how wide is it? Well, agent width is defined to be 60. So these are 240 by 240 circle. And then I draw that rectangle. And then I set up a new color, which is my player in the center of the minimap. So it's gonna be the same color as the player, the blue, the darker blue. But he's gonna have a full alpha because he'll always know where he is in the center. And then I had to play with these until I got it right. And I made him smaller, divided by 8, and I drew it. So those are just drawing the two things that are constantly in my thing. Then when I finish this, I'm gonna loop through all the humans and draw human. And then I'm gonna loop through all the zombies and draw zombie. So that shouldn't be too bad. Because this drawHuman is just gonna call this and this drawZombie is just gonna call this. Okay. And this helper method is going to tell it where to be drawn. So I don't have to do it every time the calculation is... Okay, so notice I need to loop through all the humans and the zombies and I don't know where they are. So we are going to add these as parameters to my draw method because I need to know where they are to draw them. Okay. And now it doesn't like my... Implementation does not match my declaration, so I'm gonna go back in here and add them here. And then my main game is now mad at me because my draw isn't giving me my zombies. Here it is. So my update changed, so I don't need the draw or that anymore. And then my draw down here changed. So this needs a reference to the zombies and zombies. Okay, so I'm just passing in... When I draw, I need to know where they are for me to draw them, so... I could have kept a copy of them in there, but because it's a big vector, I don't want to constantly have to copy it, so... So that's all fixed. So now this will get called correctly. So now my draw method takes in my humans, zombies. So I draw the background, I draw the player. Now I'm gonna loop through all these humans. So this human is up here called humans. So it's four... Okay, so it's gonna be a iterator. Oh man. Where is... He does it in another thing, so... Agent CPP. Uh, it'd probably be in main game, though. Yep, there we go. So, I am. Okay, and it needs my agent SpriteBatch, which is called SpriteBatch. So it needs SpriteBatch and a human, a pointer to the human. So it needs humans at I. Nope, I don't wanna do this. I wanna do this. DrawManyHuman. And I'm gonna draw many zombies, not many humans. Okay, so I take each human and I call drawManyHuman and I call each zombie and I draw many zombies. So if the human is on a minimap, so I have to check the distance to the player. So I have a pointer to this human, so if human getPosition... So I'm getting the position of my human. So I think I'll probably get another helper method in here for this distance one because this is gonna be a really ugly if. Okay, so I'm gonna make a float minimap. Colon, calculate distance to player. I already have a reference to the player. So I can take in an agent pointer. No, that was a wrong bracket. Okay. And then I need to take this into my header so it knows what I'm talking about. This will be a private method. And we take out that. Okay, helper method to calculate distance to player. And the helper method to translate position of agent to the minimap. Okay, so my first test is coming up soon on this. I'm going to calculate the distance to the player. So I'm going to if calculate distance to the player, I'm gonna pass in my human. So I'm using polymorphism here because all humans are agents, so I can pass in a human to this and it will have the same interface. So if calculate distance to human to player is greater than... Or sorry, less than my draw distance. So I have to define this draw distance. So in my minimap.h, I need a new const float draw distance. And so at the moment, we're looking at 240 by 240 squared. So my radius is 120, so I'm going to say 120 if to start and we're gonna have to play with the... That... Or I'm thinking in the wrong coordinate system. Player to enemy, it's going to be most of the screen at least and the screen is, I believe, 800 by 600. So let's say 500 here. So this is just my initial guess for my draw distance. We're gonna play with it until we get it right. Also, I'm gonna move these up. It's that constants. I like my constants at the top. And if you don't know how to do that, what I'm doing right now, it's a fun little trick. You just hold Alt and press up or down and it'll move that whole line up or down one. It's very helpful. Okay. minimap... Okay, so this is my draw distance. This is how far away... How far away in world distance an agent needs to be to be drawn. I'm actually gonna make it world squared distance. So I don't want the square root. So square roots take up a lot of time. Avoid them if you can. In this instance, I can. So I'm basically going to take a look at my x and y squared. The difference in x and y squared between my two positions. Square those and sum them. And if it's greater than this number or if it's less than this number, then I'm gonna draw it on my minimap. Um, so 500 squared requires more brain power than I have at the moment while I'm talking, so 250,000. Okay. So that's our initial guess for our distance squared. And I'm gonna change this to distance squared. Just so people know how I do, what I'm doing. Okay, so this float is gonna return uh the delta x plus squared plus the delta y squared. So I'll return. Okay, so I'm just doing this in a method to make this super readable. Okay, so we're gonna return. So my delta x is my agent spec agent dot uh getPosition dot dot I have to get it and then x minus uh, should I do this this way? Yeah, it's probably easier to read. Float agent x equals this. And if you do Ctrl R, you'll cut the whole line, so I cut it, and I can paste it a bunch of times. So my agent y is gonna be its y position. My player x is gonna be player y. So instead of agent, I'm gonna use player and player. Okay, so I'm just taking the difference between these two, squaring it. So we're gonna return ax minus py, px, sorry. Times ax minus px. It doesn't matter what order you do this in, because when you square it, it'll become positive. It's just a magnitude difference. Um, and so that's my delta x squared, and then I'm gonna do px. Uh, so you do have to do it in the same order, ay minus py. Maybe we don't, I can't remember. Commutative, whatever. A y minus p, nope. Yeah, y minus p. Okay, so I square the delta x plus squaring the delta y. So this is the squared distance, notice I, normally when you're calculating a distance, uh, I'm gonna change this to squared distance. So that's clear. I'm just trying to save a little bit of square root time. Okay, and this is squared distance. Okay, so I'm just gonna return the distance in squared uh time. And if it is less than this draw distance squared, then I'm going to draw the human. So drawing a human. So I now have to actually set up what I'm gonna draw on the minimap. Okay? Okay, so I need to draw uh something on the minimap, I have to set up a color. And assign it a texture, and a destination rect, and then call SpriteBatch dot draw. So I'm gonna get the color. So we wanted humans to be kind of red, so I could leave that. And my alpha is going to be my oh, this is getting tricky. Okay, I need to pass in, when I'm in here, I have to pass in my i as well. So I know which human. Into index. And while I'm in here, I'll do the zombie one. So this index will let me get into my alphas at the right point. Because all the alphas are gonna be a bit different, depending on how much they moved. Okay, move this i here, and this will be zombie index. Okay, so we're gonna actually draw the human. Uh, I have been using, hi, NitroBeast, welcome. I've been using Unity for quite a bit, about a year and a half. Uh, I'm still kind of a student. To it, though, um, I'm not an expert, and I haven't published any games. Do you have a question for it? Because that can probably help. Uh, right now, I'm using C++. Just uh straight C++ code, awesome. I think OpenGL is what Benjen uses. Okay, so my color for humans is red, my alpha is going to be equal to my human alphas at i. At human index. What are you switching from, NitroBeast? Yes. Unity's big benefit is that it supports two languages. Um, so if you're more comfortable in JavaScript or C#. Um, 3D technically, if you count Unity's scripting language. Which no, one that I know uses, um but being able to use both languages can really help, uh, especially if you're on a multifaceted team. Uh, I like Unreal right now, because I really like blueprints. So I'll kind of play, so. Yeah, uh, definitely, so uh, well, I learned Java, yeah. Game Maker Studios is a very easy jump to Unity. Um, you're going from, I didn't use Game Maker Language much, but it's kind of similar to other scripting languages. So you can go to using JavaScript scripts for your Unreal scripts. Um, and then from there, you can learn C# and move slowly towards C++. And then UE4 is fine, once you know C++. Okay, so when I'm drawing a mini-human, they're gonna be tiny, so they're gonna be the same size as uh, I'll eventually make these constants, but it's gonna be the same size as this player agent that I'm drawing here. Um, then this offset is going to be calculated uh by translateToMinimapPosition. Okay, so this is going to be this. So I need to take translateToMinimapPosition. So I'm gonna make a temporary column vec2. And uh, call it position. TranslateToMinimapPosition, and I'm gonna just pass in my player, or my agent's position. So. Uh, that's human dot position. And that's gonna test underscore. And I'm gonna get its position. And that returns a vec2, so I'm gonna set the position of the human to this position. And then my destination is going to be human, a position dot x and position dot y. So I'm gonna do all the translating in here. Uh, Blender, NitroBeast, is a uh 3D modeling software. It's uh, I think it's free or open source. Um, compared to, yeah, it's open source. It's, compared to Maya, it's a bit harder to use, but it is like Maya's, and what the other one, 3D Studio Max. Um, easier to use, but it's slightly less powerful. Uh, ZBrush is also good. If you have lots of money. But I'm not on RIS, so. Okay, so I set up my position to be x and y from this translateToMinimapPosition here. And then I'm gonna draw it with the rectangle, my texture mapping, using that texture ID, and this is my color. So this is gonna draw a human where I want. The next thing I have to do is not return 0, 0, because that's funny. Okay, so I'm taking in a position, this is a position of an agent, either a human or a zombie. I don't know which yet, but it doesn't matter, because I'm just calculating its minimap position. So I basically have to do what I did here. Subtract numbers, but I have to incorporate the distance um between the player. So you know what that means? I actually need the distance, so I'm gonna take this back to being the distance. Because I actually need it, so might as well use it. Okay. Uh, do I need it? Hmm. Hmm. I will have the squared distance to the player. Okay, so if my player's always in the center, and the thing's always here, I just translate it by the same number from where it is. By the same number, I translate by the player, I should be able to just do this. Uh. Copy these. This is theoretical. Okay, so my x would be this. And my y would be this. And we'll cut these out. And it's not player. It is it's not the player's getPositionY, it's worldPosition dot y. Uh, this may be a hell of an easier than I thought it was, not really necessitating a helper method. Okay, so this, I think, at the moment, should do what I want it to do, so my draw method's already being called properly, so I'm gonna draw a circle, draw the player, loop through all the humans, and draw the many humans. When I draw a many human, I see if the distance is less than my squared distance, so I'm not drawing all the humans in the level. Um, and I then set up my color for humans, set its alpha index to be that. Okay, so what I didn't do was calculate the alpha here. So I'm gonna loop through all my humans and quickly set their alpha to uh 255. Uh. So I was here. Looping through humans, don't have to write the code twice. Kill that, and so I need to set up my alphas capacity to be the same as the size of this one, so I have to reserve. So my human alphas are vector floats. Okay, so I have to human alphas dot capacity. I think it's reserve. Reserve. And it takes a size, so I want it to be humans dot size. Okay. So this is saying, take the vector of human alphas and make sure it's the same size as humans. Okay. Then I'm going to set the human alphas at i. Uh, this is gonna be different. And this is, I'm just for my initial test, I'm going to uh set it to be equal to uh 255. And I just realized that he uses ints for his colors, so I have to change this to int. Okay, so I have ints. So now this alpha here for my colors, it's static, but now my alpha down here is gonna be the same as the alpha I've set into this up here. And they'll all be solid for now, so I'll do the fancy prettiness later. Okay, so now I've got, I think everything's set up the way I want it, so now it's time to test. So hopefully nothing breaks. Succeeded, abort. Okay, I didn't initialize my vector uh for uh my alphas. My alpha vector. Okay, so just gonna steal a line of code for him. Uh, he would do that in here. Nope, it's level. Okay. Trying to figure out where he utilizes humans. Uh, apparently... I'm special. Okay, let's see what's going on. Out of range. Okay, so I'll break. So if you just ignore, when you're in C++ if you ignore those errors, and then you'll eventually get to what I did in break, it'll tell you what broke. Uh, so you can see your call stack. So right now my human alphas at i size equals 0. My capacity equals 101. So I was reserving the capacities big, it's as big as the humans array, which is good. Um, but I didn't actually, uh, set the size. Um, so... I forgot how the reserves work, so let's, uh, do this. So this is update, I don't want to do that, I don't want to do this up here. Um, human alphas. I'm gonna do this. Let's set humans dot size. Push this back to player, uh, adds a new human, okay. And has a get number of humans constant, okay. Which is in the current level. Which is what I want. Okay, so I'm just gonna copy this. And my mini map is gonna need that to initialize now. Okay. And... That's my destructor, so that's probably the wrong place to put this. And I need a what is levels? There it is. I need an std vector of levels. Oh no! Okay. Current level. Man, this is tricky. Basically, I'm not supposed to really change much of this code, because other people will be working on it, doing that, implementing the wrong things, I'm trying to, you have to try to pass in whatever you need. Current level equals 0. Try to get current level. Hello. Hello, hello. So I need to take that into. Okay, so it's happy now. Okay, well, um, so I'm taking in the level and the current level to get the number of humans. Um, because I'm gonna push back, human alphas dot pushback. Um, and I have to give it a value, so they're gonna all be, uh, z... Hmm, 128. So half transparency, something I can see but not, isn't what I want. And maybe same with zombie alphas. Okay. So now I've initialized my human alphas array vector, almost the same thing. Um, and now when I loop through the humans, I'm just gonna set them all to 255, so they should be 255 by the time they drop, but it'll be 128 if something bad happened. Okay, now this should work. Build failed. Ever missed. Cannot convert from player to const mini map. Ah, I need to pass in the levels. Current level. And current level. Player star, level star, int. Level star? Hold on. I'm just gonna pass in the current number of humans. Number of humans. That would be much easier. Let's do this. Number of humans. And... Don't know why I didn't think of this earlier, okay. And I think parameters have underscore. Okay, that'll be easier, and then, uh, game, main game, is gonna pass in this. And not itself, but I don't need that. Okay. Now that should work. We'd have one issue. Oops, oops. And, uh, boy. Okay. It is 100. Okay, so I gotta stop, I'm gonna break here and see what it's giving me as the number of humans. Because... Saying there's 100. But there's 101 because it counts the player. So I'm gonna put a plus 1 on here. Di...oops. But we'll do it, can't loop through all the humans when there's no zombies. Or, or loop through and change the zombies when there's no zombies. Okay, this should now theoretically compile. Okay, see that? That is, okay, the zombies are after me. But these are my hu, these dots popping up are my humans. So... Uh, I've just gotta figure out how to translate them. I'm trying to shoot them, okay, so that one that was moving there was this one up here. Okay, let's try one where we don't start with zombies spawning everywhere around us. So it's random where the zombies start. Okay, so, oh, stop it. Okay, I'm just testing when these guys are showing up. That was odd, okay. Who's this guy? Okay, so this guy, I believe, is this dot here. These two are these two dots. These three are these three dots. Pretty sure. Okay, so I've got my dots drawing, but they're not drawing obviously in the right place. So my translation is not going well. Okay, so my distance is working, see how? That's it? Yep, okay, so I forgot to take in to effect that I'm scaling these down to this. I knew it wouldn't be as simple as I thought. Okay, what's odd is that my player is being drawn as a red dot now. Now it's a blue dot, red dot, blue dot, red dot. Kill them all, kill all the zombies, no, I hate you. Okay, but what's interesting is that this guy's not showing up. And these guys down here are not showing up. And now I'm back to having decent ones. But now they stop working here. Okay. Let's try to figure this out. Okay, this is definitely wrong. Just thinking about it a bit harder, you obviously can tell. So if I take a position of a player in the world, it's only gonna be drawing the ones that are on the screen, I think, first of all. Uh, second of all, which I, I want to do more than that. Second of all, it's, it's, so my player's always in the center, he's gonna go down and to the left, and go here. So if I move this guy up here, he's gonna go down to the left the same amount? No, he's gotta go down to this point, whatever point that is, and then I've gotta add his relative distance to the, to the player. So the way I calculated the player, I was just getting a point, right? Um, so I have to translate to that point, which, oh... The way the camera's coded is interesting. Hmm. This is trickier than I thought. Might have to come back to this and switch to unreal for a bit. Okay, what I'm gonna do though is I'm gonna draw these zombies with green. Uh, zombie. Uh, zombie. I thought zombies were agents. What's going on? Are zombies humans? There. Zombies are agents. You take a human just fine. Ooh, girl. It'll probably be fine later. Zombie is defined. It is not defined. How did it know where a zombie was? Now it should be fine because it knows that it's zombies are an agent. Okay. Hopefully I don't get circular dependencies. Okay, so now let's find some zombies. Yeah, so see the zombies are red now too. So I'm gonna make them a cool blue. Cool blue would be a... So like 40 each and then a bright amount of blue. Uh... I can probably find it online too. Let's look for this. Color picker. So I want a cool blue like this one. So I just click it. And it's 153, 204, 255. 153... 204, 255. So it's a nice cool blue. Okay. And I'll press play again. Yeah. Hi zombie. So he's got a blue there. Let's get my clothes here because I'm not scaling it down, but... So there we go. We got light blues. Don't know why I'm light red or dark red almost. Draw a player. Draw a player. Shoot blue. Hoiny way. Okay, I think, uh, I'm happy with where I am so far. I'll still have to put in another bit of time, but I also wanted to get into some Unreal today. I want to fix everything, so let's do that. It's my man, MeManTella. FF4. Found him by this guy. This artist. I don't know his name. I just saw it on Reddit one day. Okay, so we're gonna open up time lending. Okay, so we started the UI minimap. Got a good start on it. I'm gonna have to do some math to, uh, on paper to get them translating to the right point on the minimap. Um... So, yeah. I'll do that and I think I'll be back Thursday this week and show that off. Okay, so I'll resize this so it fits my screen. Okay, so this is what we have so far. Oh, that's a bug. Play window. I don't know why I keep saving that way. Okay, so that's what we had so far. Um, hard to show my mouse because it doesn't let me have a mouse. Uh, but basically we've got, uh, in the upper left there, health bar, mana bar, charge bar, uh, an icon docking station. We have two active icons, so right now the left player has the wind and water abilities active. And they can eventually switch to the earth by pressing their swap ability button. Uh, the next ability that you swap to are the small icons and the dock. So I'm trying to get is... Um... What, what has been happening? You'll see on the right, um, the earth ball there is a little too far to the left. And it's because of the way I was animating. It's because of the way I was animating the, uh, icons. So we're gonna go back into my widget here and update all these animations because that is how I figured out you're supposed to do it. So I'm just gonna dock this to that. Okay. So here's a HUD in Unreal. Details panel does not need to be that big. Okay, so this is my HUD right now. So I have, um, the health bars, mana bars, charge bar, uh, health mana charge, the trays for the icons. Then I have each of the icons. So there's earth L2, wind L2, water L2. So you, it's gonna be kind of like a PlayStation control scheme. We have earth, water, wind over here and earth, water, wind over here. So they each have their own unique set of abilities based on where they are in the game. And when you start playing, you're gonna get, uh, some new abilities here. So you're gonna start with three of them. So what I was doing, I had one animation and it's hard to see, but we'll start playing it. I had one animation that was doing the entire tray movement here. But what I have to do is I have to break up these animations into single animations using the same icon. So I'm just moving from here to here. It's a really fast loop. It's only .15 seconds, but I'm going to move from here to here. Okay. So I now have to set up essentially four animations for each of these one I have already. So... Uh, so I've shortened Mombi to M. Earth L2, small to medium. And I just have to go through and fix all these. So... If you have any questions, this will be slightly tedious work, so feel free to ask. And I can show you stuff about the Unreal UMG creator. So I need a small or a medium. Too small. Medium too large, sorry. And I'm gonna change this to this. Just so that it's a little less long. Okay. So medium to large, so I'm gonna start here. So 36, 120, 36, 234. Okay. I'm gonna end up over here, which I believe is 80, 80. I have these written down somewhere. Oh... 80, 80, 218, 130. Nope, that's the other tray. Uh, 170, 190. There we go. Okay, so it's gonna go from here to here. Okay. Duplicate that. And we're gonna go large to fade. Okay, so it's gonna start at 80, 80, 170, 190. Starting there and then on its final frame it would be 0, 0. I just wanted to shrink, uh, to 60. So it's move big to small. Yeah. And duplicate this one. And we're going from fade to small. So it is gonna start or it's gonna end here. So 56 to 20. And here's gonna be 0, 0. 76, 242. So we're gonna fade into existence. Like that. Also, I feel like both, uh, it's a little too quick, so I'm gonna take all these animations and make them 2.425. I don't know if there's a faster way to do this. So now a full, uh, full thing will take .75 seconds instead of .45. Okay, so that was the earth L2. So that's this one. So I have to take this one out. Okay. Now we're gonna do wind L2. So I'm gonna duplicate this to start. M wind L2 fade to small. Okay, so I'll just take that 2.45. Think that... Oh, wait, no, it doesn't. If you Ctrl-click all these, you can highlight all the keyframes and delete. And nothing. Nope. Well, uh, it worked a bit. Okay. So this is fade to small. And duplicate that and it's gonna be small to medium. And we want this keyframe over here. 36... 56 to 20. I have the numbers written down, so that's where we're coming from. Okay, so here, 36, 36... 20, 234. And duplicate. Medium to large. Nope, 234. So, uh, this character dock is for Mombi and, uh, she is a warrior class hero, basically. Um... Her abilities are in production, but they're going to be, um, more like combat focused, so... Um, this one, the wind ability, is gonna shoot out a tornado. And that tornado can be used to knock back enemies and it switches at long distances in a single line, so the tornado goes forward in a line. Um... Her next ability would be the, uh, water ability, which we've called tidal uppercut. Is kind of a homage to tiger uppercut. Don't need to tell her. Uh, what's going on? Wait a minute. Okay, 'cause the large didn't go. Oh, 'cause I had the wrong one highlighted. I was talking. Um... 20, 234. Okay. And large to fade. Okay, so double check the winds. Hmm, doesn't quite look centered. This one needs to go down a bit. Ah, whatever. It's fine. I think it's just because the icon is not quite centered. Medium to large, large to fade. Okay, wind L2 is done. Duplicate. M water L2. Fade to Small. 25. Nope. So Water fades Small to Arriva. Duplicate. Small to... What? I... No. I just got... There are some Unreal Engine bugs that make it particularly long some days. Okay, my compiler is mad because of getting rid of these things. What? Uh... Yeah. Yep, this is... I'm gonna just start over basically. Okay. Duplicate this one. Small to... Yeah, Visual Studio is getting to be a bit heavy for my laptop. I pretty much only wanna work at home now. On my desktop, so... It's definitely a heavy beast. Small. So this starts here. So yeah, this one's called a Title Apparquet. I guess I should finish my story in Fade to Black. Um, so you're gonna create a little water geyser, um, right in front of you, and it'll knock enemies up and they'll kinda dangle in the air. Um, leaving them open to attacks. Uh, it'll also put out fires on enemies and locations. And you can also use it on like, blocks and, um... Boulders and stuff to push them around. So... Facebook. CRG fail, what'd you do? What happened? How can I help? Three done. Oh, that's always fun. It's always fun to mess with your materials so that your world is different. You've never made a couch skybox before? So far. Okay, so... Cycle Earth 2. M, Earth. R2. Fade to Small. Yay! I was planning a whole bunch of fun puzzles with all these abilities, um... We'll see what makes it into the final demo. We want at least two ability, like two things per ability to be done. One puzzle, one enemy. For the final version. Um, so, Wind is gonna be able to push switches, Earth is gonna be able to crack, uh, blocks. Water's gonna be able to push things up to hit switches on the ceiling and stuff like that. Pressure plates on the ceiling. Um... So... And put out fires, obviously. Okay, that is not what I copied. It did it again. Undid everything I just did. So, apparently you have to save and compile. Save and compile every time you make a new animation from another one. Or it will copy the original one that you hit Duplicate it and not the one it has highlighted. Or I have to make sure I got it highlighted. Compile, save. There we go. Oh, 'cause it had, oh, wow, okay. Okay, so, this one is... Okay, this one is... 240, 65. Okay. So this is going to be 36, 36. At 220, 45. And it's going to be 240, 90. Actually, maybe if I copy these... Oh, that'd be good. All I'm changing is image. Oh no, I can't. Just hanging out here. Trying to concentrate on numbers. It's a bit harder to talk during this 'cause you have to concentrate on where your mouse is exactly. Wish there was a way to highlight keyframes, but it doesn't let you, like you scrub this instead. I might just need to know, that's all. Okay. Okay, so, learned my lesson, compile, save. Make sure this one's highlighted. And it undid it again. I can't believe this. In the time it took me to click off of it, it undid what I just did. I don't understand what is going on in UMG's memory. Thanks. And it'll be fine now. We have to compile and save before I copy. I may stop for lunch and do a bit of this on my own, 'cause I don't feel like I'm being a good streamer or entertainer. And I have to concentrate so hard on where I'm clicking and what numbers in my head. So... I will probably be back in about an hour. And hopefully have all of these done. And then, uh, we'll start working on implementing the minimap for Time of Ending. So, I thank you for watching so far, and I will, uh, be back in about an hour. Normally I'd be more entertaining, I think that's why I'm stopping, so... Okay, CRG, I'll see you then.